Its regular meeting to conduct a public meeting under the Planning Act. Looking for a mover, please? That's councillor Rob, seconded by councillor Richards. All in favour? Or you know what I keep forgetting, we'll just go with that. Alright, so the County of Middlesex is reviewing its official plan to ensure that the land use planning policies are current, reflect updated provincial policy and reflect changing community needs for the next 25 years. Notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Planning Act and also through social media and other formats. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide the public with an opportunity to make representations in respect of the current proposed official plan amendment in support or are support of or in opposition to the proposed official plan amendment or to submit ideas and feedback for consideration. Due to the virtual format of this meeting, those wishing to address council were asked to pre-register for their delegation. Registration instructions were provided at the notice of meeting and on the county website. Those wishing to watch but not address council have been directed to the county's YouTube channel. In the terms of procedure, the Director of Planning and Development is going to provide an overview of the proposed official plan amendment. Then the floor will be open to those registered to address county council. I will also note that the agenda includes written submissions resties as of the agenda deadline, May 16th, 2022. And at council's next meeting, a report seeking direction from council will be presented by staff. Please note that if a person or a public body would otherwise have an ability to appeal the decision of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to the Ontario Land Tribunal, but the person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the County of Middlesex before the proposed official plan amendment is adopted, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision. If the person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the County of Middlesex before the proposed official plan amendment is adopted, the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal, unless in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to add the person or public body as a party. So now I would like to introduce our Director of Planning, Dirk van der Werf, and he will take over.
Thank you, Madam Warden and to council and those watching. And if IT can just bring up the presentation, I'll just go through it. Basically, I'm going to give a short introduction to what the official plan is and the work that's been done to date. Mention the Middlesex 2046 engagement and then just spend a little bit of time walking through the key changes that are proposed in the official plan amendment. Then I'll stop, then there's the public component of it. And then the warden would ask me back, we'll just talk about sort of timing of next steps. So in terms of what is an official plan, it is council's primary tool for making land use decisions and managing physical change. And it's important that we know that at the county level, it guides land use policy on a broad basis and it deals with matters of provincial interest and of county interest and acts as a bridge between the province and local municipal official plans. What has been done already, we have, and the warden did a good job of introducing and the primary reasons for the official plan amendment. I would say there's significant amount of background work has been undertaken and has been consolidated for consideration initially by the county's Plan Advisory Committee. And I do need to thank Chair Richards, the warden and committee members. They spent a lot of time walking through various issues. And that work informed not only the community engagement plan, but also the draft official plan amendment that is included in the agenda. In terms of the Middlesex 2046 engagement, for those that are interested in kind of a detailed review at county council's last meeting, which of course is available on YouTube. Aaron O'Hosky, who is also in attendance today, did provide a more fulsome summary of that process. So I would just highlight that, you know, as I said already, a significant amount of background work and Plan Advisory Committee input was undertaken. Agency circulation was under, was occurred. And then through the warden outreach to Indigenous communities as a beginning of a new working relationship has started. And series of workshops and stakeholder meetings between not only municipal staff, but target agencies, et cetera. And then a community survey, the public open house a few weeks ago, and then we are at the public meeting now. And just for whoever's writing the slide, we are several into it now. Next one. Thank you. So I mentioned already that there are the sort of 10 areas of change and they really are, that's the 10 topic areas that will guide the next part of the presentation. Next slide, please. So provincial change, as I said already, the Plan Act or the county's official plan does act as a bridge between provincial policy and local municipal official plans. And there are quite a few areas that quite a few provincial changes have occurred and the proposed official plan amendment would reflect those. Most probably most significantly is simply the provincial policy statement update and the additional provincial guidance on that. Next slide. In terms of transportation, the transportation system has been a key long-term priority for the county and therefore represents an important component of the county's official plan. Again, a number of initiatives have been undertaken, including the cycling strategy, active transportation, moving towards a transportation system approach, additional policies requiring electric vehicle, charging stations and large developments near key corridors, et cetera. So quite a number of areas in the transportation section also. Next slide. Agriculture, it is of course an important component of the economy and Middlesex county's culture. And it is that sort of balance of protecting land for future generations for agriculture. While we heard through the public consultation engagement, still providing opportunities for some flexibility. And the policies looked at a number of areas, including on-farm diversified uses, et cetera. Mergers of parcels, there's some proposed policy work there, surplus dwelling consents. The proposal is to move from the, what is currently 1999 date, the dwelling must be built prior to 1999 to the fact that the dwelling must be at least 10 years old. Next slide. Population and housing forecast. So projections are included within the county's official plan and are used by both the county and local municipalities to guide the amount of development that's anticipated. We did undertake projections about a year ago now and included three proposed scenarios, low, medium and high. And then of course, with the release of the 2021 census, this, these projections don't reflect that yet. But they are very much in line. The high projection is still a little higher than even the fairly robust growth that we have experienced in the last couple of years. Drinking source water protection, this is one of those areas that is very prescriptive and mandated by the province, to be frank. The Clean Water Act is intended to ensure the protection of municipal drinking water sources and protection of human health and the environment. And so proposed changes would include references to the source protection plans, direction for local municipal official plans and ultimately zoning bylaws, updated definitions and a mapping schedule. All of those are, as I said, fairly prescriptively required by the province. Natural heritage planning, the system, you know, the natural heritage system is made up of features, woodlands, wetlands, watercourses. And together they provide important environmental, social and economic benefits, including climate change mitigation. A number of years ago, we did undertake the Middlesex Natural Heritage System Study in cooperation with the conservation authorities that provides that basic scientific level of analysis for the Middlesex County landscape. And the, it's important that not only the natural heritage study, but the proposed policies in the county's official plan, that they are intended to not impact the ability of agricultural operations to continue. It really is at the time of land use change of change from, for instance, agriculture to urban along the boundaries of urban areas that the natural heritage system should be considered. So really seeking to accommodate growth while still protecting the natural heritage system. The economy and strategy alignment. So county council, separate from the official plan work, here took two key strategic documents, a corporate strategic plan update and the economic development strategy. Both of those were done and we built upon the economic development strategy, had a steering committee and a consultant that was assisting with that work. And so we used that same committee and that same structure to look at the other, excuse me, the other documents. Apologies. So we worked with that same committee and looked at a number of areas, including broadband infrastructure, the encouragement of arts and culture and tourism, housing and housing came up in every workshop and every area of consultation. And then also some more, I would highlight some more policy direction on employment lands and where maybe we might call marginal employment lands could be converted to other uses. Next slide. You know, anyone, county council and anyone that lives in the county knows that development across all types of applications has increased throughout the county. And the Middlesex 2046 consultation helped us understand community perceptions and expectations. And very interesting that, you know, the majority of people that responded to the survey were supportive of the development that was occurring. And then did provide feedback about their willingness to look at additional types of housing, housing geared to people of different, different age brackets, new homeowners, seniors, et cetera, while also encouraging that existing communities maintain their, their feel, if you will. The housing topic, as I already said, was something that was referenced again and again, regardless of the consultation topic through the Middlesex 2046 program. And really it is the fundamental challenge for county council and for our local municipalities. It's accommodating that demand for as many as almost 18,000 new homes by 2046 while still protecting agricultural lands and natural heritage, et cetera. So we did throughout the process, ensure that the public knew that the county is undertaking an obtainable housing review. That does extend beyond the timing of this official plan amendment. And so there will, in all likelihood, be another official plan amendment to deal just with housing, probably in 2023. In fact, at the RFP for that project is out right now in county council. We hope to have that before county council to award that contract in the next month. So this official plan amendment, there are some proposed interim policy changes related to additional residential units, including tiny homes, connections with the county's homeless prevention and housing plan, and also encouraging in a broad basis, more diversity of housing options. Other considerations, as I mentioned, the warden has led the engagement with Indigenous communities through Middlesex 2046. And it's proposed in the current draft to acknowledge within the official plan, the unique relationship that First Nations, Métis and Inuit people have with the land as a basis for future discussions with the county and with First Nations. There are of course, a number of minor technical changes proposed to the official plan, changes in terminology, dates, mapping to reflect newer information, et cetera. So in summary, subject to further input from the public and from county council, I do believe the proposed official plan amendment would incorporate as required, newer provincial legislation and policies, including bringing the official plan into consistency with the provincial policy statement. I believe the proposed official plan amendment would implement the corporate strategic plan and the economic development strategy as well as many other guide documents, such as the cycling strategy. I think it would guide growth over the 25-year planning horizon. And I do believe that it reflects where possible, the input that was received through the Middlesex 2046 program. Of course, county council can consider any additional changes, either based on the input from the public at this meeting or council's own perspectives or any other considerations. And with that, Madam Warden, I thank you for the opportunity to give some introduction to that.
Alright, thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to the written submissions council has received. And I'm sure you've had a chance to look at them. So we're going to move on to representations from the public. And I'm going to rely on our ever efficient Mr. Bailey to bring people on and let me know who's coming on.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So I will be moving attendees to panelists. So they'll be able to speak and you'll be able to see them. First up is Ali Soufane. Okay, I did hit the promote button. Might move on to the next person and Ali can go afterwards.
Okay. And our next person is?
Andrew Payne.
Oh, Andrew, okay. Hi, Andrew. Welcome. And whenever you're ready, you can start your, your delegation.
Yeah, no, thanks for taking the time to have me on this afternoon. I'm with Masonry Works Council of Ontario, where the industry association representing the broader masonry sector here in the province of Ontario. And we work with both upper tier and lower tier municipalities as they go through their official plan process to help them, help builders build to a higher standard within, within their community. So just wanted to touch base today and then comment on the official plan and make sure that Middlesex is certainly looking toward a higher standard of building, setting more rigorous expectations for minimum baseline of standards and urban designs to help assist lower tier municipalities. I'm sure it's all top of mind now, particularly with the, the weather that we saw blow through the province this weekend. Durability, resilience and sustainability are something that is going to be important and something that official plans and planning policy levers can certainly, can certainly help to, to address, particularly through the usage of more durable materials. Basically, at this point, we're just asking that the, that the county and as an upper tier municipality as well, put in enabling guidelines into the official plan to ensure that lower tier municipalities that will be, that will be building off of, off of this plan have, have the right direction for, for a higher standard and urban design guidelines that you would like to see in the community moving forward over the next, next two decades. I think with that, my colleague, John Armstrong is here as well. I see him, I see him down there. He may have a couple of comments as well. So with that, I'll defer my time.
Okay, thank you. John, whenever you're ready.
Sure, thank you, Warden. As Andrew said, we're with the, the masonry industry. We work with municipalities all across the province that are doing official plan reviews and secondary plans and urban design guidelines. And we encourage municipalities to use the levers at their disposal to ensure that builders build to a higher standard. It's as, it's as, it's as simple as that. The decisions that, that municipalities are making with their, with their OPs and with their design guidelines, they're really hundred-year decisions, sometimes hundred-plus-year decisions. So it's really important that, that, that municipalities pay that level of attention. And we know certainly that, that Middlesex is, is an upper tier. It doesn't have the, the same, the, the same level of influence in design guidelines as, as lower tier municipalities. That being said, you also operate in an environment where you've got, where some of the lower tier municipalities are really probably too small to be able to afford the kind of design guidelines that, that can be, that, that could be required. So we would encourage Middlesex County to, to potentially develop some model that, design guidelines that the lower tiers could, that the lower tier municipalities could follow. This was done actually, this has been done actually in, in Niagara region to help to support the lower tier municipalities. Because again, if, 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 making sure that you've got good language and good enabling language in your OPs and in your secondary plans, as well as your design guidelines, making sure that you've got, you've got good language. So that way, if somebody actually comes to town, a builder, builder comes to town and wants to build something that really doesn't meet your standards, you want to make sure that you've got the policies in place that give you the, that, that, that give you the tools to be able to insist that those, that, that high standards be met. When you look at what's happening in, with housing and how important housing is and how much it feeds into it, there's a lot of interest in, 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 in new housing options. One of the things we'd encourage you to be cautious about, however, is to cut corners too much when it comes to, when it comes to the quality of that housing stock, sometimes there's a rush to, to, to cut those corners. And I, and like I say, we've been to about over 150 municipalities over the last half a dozen years. And I can, I, I think we all know those neighborhoods in where we live, I'm in Niagara. We all know those neighborhoods where we live, where corners were cut by builders. And we all know what happens to them in about 20 years. So what we're encouraging you to do is to put language into your plans, work with the local municipalities to ensure that your municipalities are protected. Certainly you've, you've, you've got some good language in there about supporting strong urban design and revitalization in the downtowns. We encourage you to look in, into, into the other parts of human municipality as well. Because people don't just live in the downtown, they spend probably more time in their own neighborhoods. So we encourage you not to, not to ignore the neighborhoods, but pay attention to the neighborhoods. Because generations from now, two, three generations from now, we want our grandchildren, great grandchildren to have some, to, to, to seize part of the same community that, that, that this generation actually built. So, and we want, and, and you know, we're hoping that future generations will also say, boy, that, you know, that, that, that group really got it right. We have a, we have beautiful communities as a result of the decisions that were made back then. So, so we encourage you to, to use the language within your OP to ensure that you have the tools and you have the opportunity to, to, to ensure that those higher standards are met. Because as finally, just before I wrap up, you know, as, as we look to the, the intensification that's starting to happen and the growth that's happened, that's, that's happening in Middlesex, the quality of the, the quality of, of your, of the built form is going to be even more and more important. So paying attention to that built form, not just public space, but, but recognizing that everybody sees the built, everybody sees the buildings, everybody sees the housing. It's an intimate part of what the identity of your communities are going to be. So we encourage you to pay attention to, to, to those and, and, and get the language into your OP that will give the municipality that kind of, that, that kind of influence. Because ultimately, the builder's job is when they sell that first home. The homeowner's job is, you know, they're, they're, they're responsible for five to seven years, however long they're going to live there. But that, but, but those buildings are going to be community assets in the, in the broad view for, for generations. So I just encourage you to, to spend the time and get the policies in place to make sure that, 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 that Middlesex County grows and develops in the way that, that, that benefits everyone. That's it.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. And thank you, Andrew. And I know that you're very passionate and you've been very diligent about going to the lower tiers with their official plan because I recognized your face as soon as you started talking. And thank you again for your concern.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Chris, who do we have next?
Up next, we have Ali.
We're gonna try it again.
Alright.
Nope, there he is.
I'm not Ali. You may know that, but I am councillor for Ali. And he, he's not going to speak. Oh, there he is.
I didn't know I was going to be one of the first up here, but thank you for allowing me to speak. We're very excited to, to be a part of this process. Our sites overall in the Kamoka Killworth area are, are exciting from a number of points. One being the recreation and the, the amenity and parkland system, as well as some compact forms of development. I would say unique to, to the area. We've done this in many other municipalities and we hope to bring forth a very smart, responsible, environmentally conscious type of proposal. So we very much look forward to continuing the efforts that we've put forth with, with staff and ultimately councils. Thanks very much for your time today.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? I've got two Ali Soufanes, so I wasn't sure which one's commenting here. I feel like I'm on that game show, will the real one please stand up? But that's great. If that's all your comments for today, thank you. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the next person, Chris.
Next up, we have Alexandra Haas.
Yeah, go ahead. Whenever you're ready, Alexandra.
Hi, good afternoon, Warden Warwick and members of council. My name is Alex Haasen and I'm with Sifton Properties Limited, located at 1295 Riverbend Road in London. So Sifton Properties submitted comments to Middlesex County in regards to the official plan review with respect to municipalities of Strathroy, Caradoc, Middlesex Centre and Thames Centre, specifically Thorndale. We are requesting reconsideration by council regarding inaccurate conclusions of the population and household growth projections based on five-year-old data. We do believe that the projections should be updated to reflect the 2021 census data that's been released earlier this year. Based on our review of that data, it is our opinion that growth should be directed towards Strathroy, Caradoc, Middlesex Centre and Thames Centre, specifically the settlement area of Thorndale. Further, we are requesting that each municipality be required to engage in a complete comprehensive review at the time of their five-year official plan amendment, inclusive of a land needs analysis, which uses current data and accurate population housing projections to determine the short and long-term supply needs in accordance with the PPS. Lastly, we are also requesting that council reconsider policy 2.2.1, which designates all lands outside of the settlement area as prime agricultural land. Prime agricultural areas are often subject to a strict set of policies through the PPS and the upper, lower tier municipalities. So we are concerned that this will discourage settlement boundary expansions to accommodate growth, which does directly contradict policies of the PPS around growth and housing. So thank you for your time today and your consideration to our request for reconsideration of those viewpoints.
Great. Thank you very much, Alex, for taking the time today.
Thank you.
And Chris, whenever you're ready.
Next up, we have Murray Good.
Very good.
Yes, Murray here, Whitecrest Mushrooms, just, so it's with the 401 on 73 Highway Mushroom Farm. Just want to keep in the forefront on-farm housing for farm workers. Right now, we have farm workers that we're bringing from the London area, Dorchester area and around kind of the countryside here to house our foreign labor. I know in the past, we've had issues with having more than one dwelling or non-attached dwelling on the property. I would like to keep that moving forward to be able to look at a, say, a tiny home situation with our foreign labor to have them on the farm that are directly related to the farm work. Right now, we have 45 employees here harvesting mushrooms and doing daily work. So to the council, I'd like to be able to somehow move ahead with a actual official plan here at Whitecrest Mushrooms to, to get permitting done and then take a look at our proposal for our housing, tiny home housing for our staff. And yeah, that's about it.
Okay, Mr. Good, I, I know that we've discussed this before and I'm sure the pandemic really put a spotlight on housing for farm workers on, on, you know, the, the quality of the housing and the amount of people in each housing. So it's a great time to discuss this. So any other comments from you?
No, that, to that point, that is very good, right? We try to keep social distancing in the farm as far as when they're working in the rooms and stuff like that. And then we have to put them back into a home with five or six people in a home. So we'd like to segregate it out to one or two people in a room, in a, in a, in a house. So that way we
we'd like to segregate it out to one or two people in a room, in a, in a, in a house. So that way we can keep, it doesn't even, even if it's not COVID, just from many other kind of colds and flus and stuff like that. So that's final comment on that, but I just want to keep it in the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Good. And whenever you're ready, Chris, moving on to the next person.
Next up is Stephen Stapleton.
Stephen Stapleton. There you are.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Welcome again. And whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Yes, hopefully, it's been cutting in and out, so hopefully.
Okay.
Hear me a little bit here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I did, I did have an opportunity to meet with Dirk and go through some of my previous con, comments, and we've been working away at resolving those issues. However, there's two, two points, main points. One, I'd like to reiterate and support Alexandra Haasen's comments regarding the growth management projections and settlement boundary concerns associated with those, you know, I'll say, old projections. Obviously, we've had substantial growth in the last number of years, and they're not reflected in these projections. So we have concerns about that. I'll be speaking on behalf of both, both myself personally and also Auburn Developments when I talk about the, the ecological systems approach and the, and the expansion of natural heritage and infringing onto the private use and enjoyment of certain lands. The difficulty with some of the comments is the scale of the mapping made it difficult to, to, you know, really delineate, delineate the extent of the expansion. But needless to say, I think it's, it's, it's incorporated additional lands within that designation that aren't justified. And, 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 you know, this type of approach requires justification and background reports to support that justification, because the threshold to change a land use should, should meet that standard of background reporting. If there is some background reporting that hasn't been provided, it hasn't been disseminated for review, and therefore a thorough review hasn't received the public scrutiny. So we would ask that that information be conducted before the change, not, not after proposing the change. So those types of issues, I think, remain unresolved, and we would ask that further investigation and background reporting be applied before county council endorses the new official plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stapleton. And I think that that concludes your presentation. I'll ask Chris to bring the next person on. Thank you.
Next up, we have Anna Gladys. Okay, she has not accepted yet, so bring in the next person, Amy Choi. Okay, neither accepted, and those are the last two on the list here. So if we just give them a minute here.
Sure, we'll just give them a minute just in case, and then we'll. Is that all we have is seven?
Looking at the list of attendees, yep, everyone's had their chance to speak.
Any signs of anybody, Chris?
Nothing. I'll send the push once more to each of them. I will mention they both were fairly late registrants, so they may just have wanted to attend and watch.
Without, yeah, without actually.
I'll, I'll do the promote to panelists for each of them again here, and if they don't join in, I think we can move on from this piece. Well, both of them declined, so I think neither of them needed, wanted to speak. So we're good. That's everybody in the attendees list.
All right. Well, thank you very much for making that go very smoothly, Chris. Now, council, if you have any questions regarding the proposed official plan amendment at the next, let me see here. We can also do this at the next meeting when Dirk brings the official report as well. So we have a couple of opportunities. Does anybody want to talk about the process at this time? I don't see anybody's hands up. So now I have a decision here that the official plan amendment presentation, written submissions and delegations be received for information, and that the director of planning prepare a report to council detailing the proposed county of Middlesex official plan amendment, including analysis of all the comments received for the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. So looking for a mover. Counselor Rob, seconded by Counselor DeVet. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, anyone opposed? So moved, and now moving on to bylaws, seventeen A, seventy-one sixty-eight. Oh, we have to, we have to, yeah, just sorry, I forgot that we cannot continue to bylaws until I ask that this public meeting be adjourned, and that council reconvene its regular meeting at two thirty-eight PM. So mover, Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Vanderheiden, all in favor? No, forget it. It's okay. We're all good. And now we're moving on to bylaws. That's seventy-one sixty-eight. A bylaw can confirm the proceedings of council at the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting of council for first and second reading, looking for a mover. Counselor Mayhew, seconded by Counselor Elliott. And now that, anyone opposed to that? Seeing none. Now moving on to the bylaw being a third and final reading mover. And that's Counselor Richard, seconded by Counselor Burkhardt-Jackson. Anyone opposed? And now at this time, two thirty-nine PM, I'm looking for a mover to adjourn. Don't all put your hands up at once. There we go. Counselor Elliott and seconded by Counselor Vanderheiden, and anyone opposed?